Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of May 20th, 2021, and June 3rd, 2021.
I'll second that.
You're quite right, Judy. I have a typo here. All in favor?
Aye. For the record, everybody has raised their hand.
In our land courts? None? You're muted, Drew.
None.
Site building permit plan reviews, 73 Margin Street. Petitioner here?
Yep, I'm gonna allow him to talk. Hi, Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Would you like me to share my screen, or do you want me to give you access to share your screen to go through the presentation?
I, yeah, if you want to, let me share, I can share mine.
Alright, I will allow access. Quickly. Sorry, one moment. I'm gonna promote you to panelists quickly, and then I'm going to allow panelists to share their screens, so bear with me one second. Alright, you are all set now if you want to share your screen.
Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Yeah. Perfect. Alright, excellent, you guys can see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so this is an existing Sunrise senior facility. What they would like to do is they would like to increase their parking count. Right now, they currently have thirty existing stalls. And they're all in the rear of the building. So we looked at, could we restripe in a manner to gain more stalls, but we found if we just restripe the back, we would end up losing stalls rather than gaining. So then we looked at, how could we gain more parking stalls for them? And then what you see is, we've added an additional fourteen proposed stalls. It was eleven in the front and three additional in the rear. We've added two ADA stalls to the front, so that way they'd have ADA access from the front and ADA access from the rear. But the intent is to have most of the visitors come in from the front. Doing, or by adding additional parking stalls, we maintain the current traffic flow pattern that was originally there, so we just took that. Right, it's the front, basically widened it a little bit, added the parking. This is still gonna be a one-way through, so you're not gonna be able to come from this direction and go backwards. It's still the, you know, the one direction. We haven't changed any of the traffic flow for the fire department, so what they had before, it's still gonna be there. We went through, we've, uh, this, we're, we've provided a landscaping plan that would meet the local jurisdictions' requirements. We've also done site lighting, so we have the photo metrics to show what the impacts would be of that, so we added four new poles, but I believe two of them are existing that we removed and added two new poles, just so they all matched. And then in the rear, we left that alone, because it was an existing light pole right here. So that is basically the extent of the site. It's very minimal impact. I know it was discussed before, what was the actual square footage, so we're gonna be impacting roughly 6,340 square feet for a disturbance of about .15 acres. Is there anything in particular you guys would like to see or have further clarification on?
Any questions, board members? Go ahead, Roy.
Hi, yeah, is there any existing stormwater management on property?
Not that we're aware of. The only structure that would be impacted would be this structure right here. William asked me to check in to see if there was a four-foot sump and if it had a hood. Unfortunately, the maintenance crew went out there and did their best to try to remove that lid, and they could not get it off to verify. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go ahead and remove this structure and install one that would have the four-foot sump and the hood as requested by him.
Yeah, well, that wasn't exactly where I was leading. I was leading where you're gonna be adding, I don't know, I think in the vicinity of 6,000 square feet of impervious area or 5,000?
That's just the disturbance. As far as the increase in impervious, it'd be less than that.
Yeah, well, it's going somewhere, right? So is it going to Bishop Fenwick's land, or?
No, the most, all of this would drain to the north here and go to this structure, and then if that structure couldn't handle it, it would go out into the street.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, and then this part back here, this is so minimal that you notice this piece here.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Dr. Otto.
Just to tag on to what Roy asked, where does that catch basin in the front go to?
Because we couldn't pop off the lid, I'm sure, because we don't have record drawings of this, but William and I both talked about it, and we both are understanding that we believe it would go to the street into the local jurisdictional sewer there.
So the stormwater system that's in Margin Street?
Yes. That's our, that's our assumption.
I was under the impression you could pull plans in the building commissioner's office for projects going back quite some time, if you wanted to take a look at what was originally permitted.
Okay, we can, we can check into that.
I mean, that, that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that that building was built in probably nine, somewhere between ninety, ninety-five and ninety-nine, ninety-eight, maybe, something like that. Does that make sense?
Yep, that sounds about right. That's all I had to ask, Mr. Chairman.
Just a comment for myself, I would prefer you keep your stormwater on your property and deal with it there than running out in the street. But Mr. Politz is the expert, and he did have a memo about that catch basin. And I'm sure you'll rectify it if there was a problem, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it'll definitely go to that catch basin first. But if the sewer and the roadway is backed up for any reason, and the water can't get out, then it's gonna pond up, but then it's eventually gonna go over the ridge in the pavement and make its way to the street.
It leaves your property, it will flow to the north. I don't know where the structures are on the street there, but it will flow to the north.
Yeah. Alright, but we do have curbing along the north edge here, so it wouldn't just bypass and go through the property. It would push to the left and then north.
Right. Anything else, anything further? Do I have a motion?
Make, make a motion to approve plan as submitted?
You want to include Will's memo with that, Roy?
Yes, include Will's memo, thank you very much.
That would be Will Politz's memo of June 15th.
I was gonna say, I would, I'd look for clarification on what expressly or explicitly with Will's memo for the motion.
Well, I don't have the motion, I don't have the memo here, so if someone could take my place with that, that'd be great. Can't turn the other, get the other computer going.
I guess I was looking for, if you want to say something along those, satisfies the Department of Public Services memo, or?
That's fine, satisfies Department of Services memo dated, was it June 15th, John?
Correct.
Thank you.
I can pull that up if you guys want to see it.
I think everybody has.
I think we're all set. Do I have a second here?
I'll second.
Dr. Otto, second. All in favor?
Uh, I'm, it's, I'm gonna take a roll call vote.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm just gonna take the screen back. Sorry, bear with me one second, okay. Attorney Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Samo's?
Yes.
Mr. Gagnon?
Yes.
Mr. Gagnon?
Yes.
Dr. Otto?
Yes.
Passes. Uh, Michael, we are out tomorrow, Friday, so Monday when I'm in the office, I will draft up a memo, I'll send that to our building department, and it will state that you should be all set to file a permit with the building department.
Excellent. As far as that structure being removed, do I need to send revised plans to you guys to see that that was addressed, or will the building department review that?
Uh, building department will want that, but if you want to CC me on that as well, just so I can have it in the file, that would be greatly appreciated.
I can do that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, I appreciate all your time.
Welcome.
Uh, next item, appointments, seeing none, subdivision board action, Boulderwood, nothing from public services on that yet?
Yet to hear anything. Uh, I, I can reach out to DPS this week and see if they've been up there, but I know Will is full stop the thing, so, busy.
Uh, Stonegate subdivision, I believe we have a correspondence requesting an extension of time. Someone like to make two motions on that, please?
We have a date for the correspondence, and who, who it was sent from?
File now.
Let me, I can pull it up. It is dated June 10th, from Attorney Kelty requesting continuance until July 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we accept the letter from Attorney Kelty dated June 10th regarding continuing the time for acceptance until June 24th, 2021. And that we further continue the time for acceptance or acting on the Stonegate subdivision until June 24th, 2021.
July 22nd.
Okay, I didn't have the letter, I'm looking at the agenda, July 22nd, 2021, 2021.
You're moving to receive and extend, correct?
Yes.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Otto? All in favor?
Aye.
For the record, everybody has raised their hand.
There are two correspondents from public services, uh, I don't have them before me, they are here on the screen. Both are regarding receiving funds in lieu of sewer improvements. Someone just moved to receive both of those?
Motion to receive two letters from public services regarding.
Virchell and 87 Lowell Street.
Virchell and 87 Lowell Street mitigation for sewer impact.
Have a second?
Second.
Peter, all in favor?
For the record, everybody's raised their hands.
I, I had a brief conversation with Will about this, and I understand that they're starting to lean more towards money instead of assigning discrete projects to different developers. They find it's easier to manage that way. So the money goes in a fund, and then the city goes out, assembles some of these, puts them into a contract, and hires somebody to do it. They know it gets done right, so.
It's, so it's easier for the city doing it this way, because I'm sure all the easy projects are already.
Well, of course, all the, all the, all the low fruit's been picked, exactly right, but, uh, yeah, that, they feel that this is a better way to manage it, and quite frankly, makes sense to me.
I don't have a problem with that at all. Uh, item G, there was a special permit for 252 Andover Street. Anybody have a question or comment on that?
It's, unfortunately, it's being, it's being heard tonight. I got it last week after our meeting, so. And I believe there was one other. I also added into your, just other things that we got laid ads, uh, in your packets, you should see, there was correspondence from the city council, uh, legal affairs correspondence in regards to the Mullins Law, or Mullins Rule?
We had that in effect years ago.
No, we didn't.
And then it was.
The city council voted to not allow us to adopt it.
Correct. And if my memory is right, and this is a long time ago, I believe we were told by council that as long as we reviewed all the information and documentation, that we were able to vote on a, on a project or subdivision, whatever it may be.
That, that's what the Mullins case says. Well, but, but it has, but the rule has to be adopted by the, uh, the body in the city or town adopting it that has the authority to do that. In PBD, my understanding was that's the city council, and after some debate and discussion, which some of us may remember, um, they opted not to adopt that.
That's correct. Now, Drew, what are they looking for, a recommendation from us, or are they just gonna roll with this?
Uh, I think it uh, I think they're just, oh, I, we want to make comment, I think we can, when it gets sent to the committee or the council as a whole, but I believe this is just to just to explain what happened.
Go ahead, Roy.
Either John or Peter, can you explain to me, exact, this Mullins Rule, is this, is this what the city council's been calling item seventeen or rule seventeen, or it's totally different?
I, I really don't know, but.
Rule, uh, just to clarify, rule seventeen is, uh, get all your permits and then come in front of the city council.
Okay, okay, could, could someone explain the Mullins thing, because I don't understand?
I'll, I'll try, but I, if, you know, I, just from my general understanding of it. The Mullins case, I forget which, which city or town it arose from, it was a Supreme Judicial Court case that stated in effect that you didn't have to be present at the public hearing to vote on the matter that the public hearing pertained to when the vote finally comes up. Uh, as long as you are in possession of all of the documents that are relevant and have reviewed the minutes of the meetings that led up to the vote. I think that's essentially what Mullins case says is a basis for allowing a city or town to adopt a rule permitting a vote under those circumstances.
And just to add to it, you have to attest that you've read and reviewed all the, you know, available documents and meeting minutes or recordings, and then you can vote.
And actually, now with all this audio/video recording, uh, it's far easier to review.
Okay, so this is, yeah, this has got to be the item that sometimes gets us into a quorum issue. If somebody's not in attendance during a public hearing, then when the vote comes up, and, and people who were in attendance happen to be out, but we may have a quorum, but those people can't vote because they weren't at the public hearing.
Right.
To John's point, now that videos of those hearings are available, there's, there's no real difference from being at the hearing uh, than viewing the, the hearing on video. You know, before, you weren't there, you didn't know what happened, you, 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 you know.
Right, but maybe then that person could make, could make that attestation at the, at the vote night that he has reviewed the meeting that he missed. And he has all the documents, and he's prepared to, to engage and vote.
Correct.
Yeah, and you know, I'm not sure that's a formal requirement of the adoption of the Mullins Rule, that you view a video of the hearing, because that didn't exist at the time. But it might become, you know, it's, it's a good idea that it become a, a formal requirement that the video was viewed as well as part of that attestation, if it's available, if the video's available.
Yeah, that's what the city council language actually says, is that you are testing, that you've seen the, the recording. I think it's one upside of the pandemic among very few, that you can really now have the sense of the meeting, not just read the, the summary through the minutes.
As, it's as if you attended.
Yes.
And if I recall, attending the meetings or not was one of the reasons that the, the council was reluctant to, um, let us adopt the rule. I think there was some concern that people might not attend meetings, if that were the case.
Well, there, there was a comment someone made, that now they won't even have to attend a meeting, so. Uh, I, I can't speak for the whole board, but I think this is a positive thing, and I think we should, uh, give them affirmation to a good, a positive answer, and, uh, we have no problem with this. It's another tool in our bag.
It benefits everyone, us, the city, the applicants.
Yes, I, I agree, Peter, because it, it puts us in a bind, and, and then the applicant has all their people in, and and they're paying money to those people to show up, whether it be a, an engineer, or an attorney, um, you know, whatever, and, and then they just gotta pay them again to come to a meeting, because we couldn't take the vote, because someone didn't show up, so I agree with you a hundred percent.
So I guess we're all for it.
You, does the board want to make a letter and submit it to city council, or?
Yes, Drew, formulate some kind of a communication to the council that, that we're in favor of this.
Alright.
And, and to the other comment, John, I, I think this, this board, as it, as it sits right now, has a pretty darn good attendance record. It's showing up at meetings, quite frankly, so.
Do we want to take a motion for that, or?
Someone want to make a motion to send a correspondence to council?
Is the motion gonna be to request that the council act so as to adopt the Mullins Rule?
That's what the board wishes. It sounds like everybody seems to be in favor of it and wants the board to.
I, you know, I just, it's kind of a generic terminology to use, the Mullins Rule. Is it, is it defined more clearly, Judy? Did you see something from the council?
Yep, so you could say, yeah.
It refers to Mass General laws, um, chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three D.
If you have something in front of you, maybe you should make the motion.
Alright, let me go, let me go back and get it.
Because I don't have.
You know what, I scribbled down the note, because I wanted to go read, read the legislative thing myself, but, okay, so, um, Mr. Chairman moved to authorize our city planner, Andrew Levin, to send a letter to the city council indicating our willingness to, um, well, our agreement that this is a good step to take and will benefit transparency of government.
Second? Mr. Gagnon, all in favor?
Aye.
For the record, everybody has raised their hands.
And the other matters probably before the board, future planning board meetings, is there anyone having any thoughts, discussions? I thought we went over this at the last meeting, so.
Uh, we did, the board just asked me to explain what one would look like. I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts for the last meeting. Uh, so, in a mad rush to scramble, when the legislature did not take any action earlier this week, and I thought we were about to have to meet in public, I, uh, I found out, I thought we could only meet in the Wigan, we can meet in our original meeting location in the lower-level conference room, and how we would run it is that, if you remember correctly, we had that large screen, TV screen that was in the, uh, in the conference room, and run much similar to this meeting, if the board members, you have board members that asked to have some sort of virtual and some sort of in-person hybrid. And how it could work is that on that large conference table, uh, the board members would all sit around it, the public could still sit in the front. Uh, we'd have a computer, uh, that would be broadcasting the Zoom meeting, and PAT could actually broadcast our Zoom feed, much like they're doing right now, but we would be in the room, and then if any applicants or attendees wanted to come in via Zoom, they still could, and if somebody wanted to, say, present like tonight, uh, we could just have that screen show it, so we could still have a sort of hybrid in-person meeting as well.
This is a really, really small point. I would bring my laptop down to the meetings, but I found that the wireless down in the basement there is not great. Uh, now, that's of course quite a long time ago. I don't know if things have changed since then, Drew?
Um, I, I could double-check when I'm down there, but I don't think I've, I've had issues with it. I also have a hotspot on my phone that if I had to, you know, do that, I probably could.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Roy. I, I, I thought we we left last meeting with a, uh, that Drew was gonna go kind of look around a bit and see if we could get into the, the DPS building up on Farm Ave, because everybody, every member of the board seems to like the, the roominess there, the size of the table to, to move plans around and stuff like that, and if you've had a chance to do that or not, I know this, I know this one kind of got sprung on you, where it was gonna be virtual, then it was gonna have to be in-person, and then the, the rule changed, but I don't know how big of a deal it is to, on every other Thursday night, or the first and third Thursday nights, to give us access to that conference room at the DPS, so, I don't know, John?
Drew, have you looked into that at all?
I mean, I can right now, like, just because of COVID, how we have it set up is that the city hall has certain protocols, and, I mean, the Department of Public Service Building acts as a separate building, and I don't, no one is gonna be there at 7:00 PM and evening, so I, I know you guys did that before, I mean, I can reach out to the Department of Public, the director and, and see, but I, you know, right now, where there's just certain protocols, the city hall has set up for public meetings, so that's why I was looking to have, keep our meetings there at the moment. Um, another thing is, um, capability for PAT to record meetings, um.
Well, it's not like they show up now, it's just that you, you give them a Wi, a Wi-Fi link, and there's, there's probably Wi-Fi in there, but.
There, there is, but the other idea is that with that lower-level conference room, we have like a large TV screen, so if someone is not there and they need to share a plan, then.
I mean, not, just, not, not to sugarcoat this or anything, but that that lower-level conference room wasn't good twenty years ago, and it's not good now.
Yeah, yeah, I can look into it. I just don't know if it's gonna be an issue of, you know, budget or not, because someone's not working there, and.
Well, I, I understand the city hall is open, and, and it, and it's easier and all that stuff. I, I get it. Thank you.
Well, years ago, when we were up DPS, I think we locked the doors when we left. There, there was a janitorial staff in there in the evening, uh, and once they left, and we left, we locked up. That's how it worked back then. Uh, getting back to Zoom meetings, I would like to see presenters present in person, myself. And secondly, something else I thought of, you know, we, we got Zoom bombed last meeting. And aside from that, when someone is gonna give testimony via Zoom, they, they have to identify themselves, name and address for the record, just, just like they're coming before us to speak. It's just a little food for thought for everyone. We're just not gonna take random comments.
Uh, it wouldn't present, it wouldn't prevent Zoom bombing.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think that person was gonna.
Someone wants to offer testimony, uh, they should provide the name and address for the record, just, just like an in-person meeting.
Speaking of meetings, does the board want to me to set an in-person meeting for your July fifteenth, is it? Judy, we just went over these dates, and I, July fifteenth, yes, for the July fifteenth meeting?
I'm all in favor of in-person meetings.
We would have, it would be hybrid, so if people do not feel comfortable coming in, then we would be able to do that.
What's the legislative, um, extension amount to?
April twenty-twenty-two.
Like how?
So.
That said, I'd be happy to come down to wherever the meeting is held in my actual personal self.
Uh, so if that's the case, I'll set up, I'll set the meeting for next, uh, month. Bearing no, uh, conflicts with city council, there's potential it could be in the Wigan. Um, but if not, it'll be in the lower-level conference room, but I'll work that out at city hall.
Well, even, even if it's downstairs, we'll, we'll see how things work. That'll be a good. Well, even, even if it's downstairs, we'll, we'll see how things work. That'll be a good shakedown mission, so.
Yeah, I, I was, I was, uh, doing a little presentation at the last city council meeting up in the Wigan Auditorium, and, uh, there was a one person that called in, in, in regards to the presentation that I was making, and the sound was absolutely terrible. Nobody could understand what she was saying. But it, the echoing up there is, is phenomenal. I don't know how they, how they manage it, but.
So if you want, I can, I can just set it for the lower-level conference.
Either way, I don't, I don't care, I'm just making a comment.
Alright.
Well, let, let's do the conference room, and, and we can see how it shakes out.
Okay.
Might be a learning thing. Uh, anything else, folks? I'll accept the motion.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Roy, Roy second. All in favor?
Hi.
Everybody has raised their hand.
Hey, folks, thank you, uh, happy Father's Day to you fathers out there.
Happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Have a good one, everyone.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, just, uh.